Let's go ahead and call the meeting in order, please. This is our public hearing for our FY 2014 budget. This meeting... We will go into our special call meeting and we will, the council will then vote on that budget at that time. So, we will go ahead and hear from those who have comments. One gentleman has to get out really quickly and I told him if we, if others don't mind too bad, we'll go ahead and let him speak briefly and that's Mr. Jim Wyndham at, from Woodin Nap, Detroit. And then, Mr. Bob Riley.
Hey, members of the council. Good to see a good crowd here. I'll be brief, but I want to talk about items that are on the budget. First of all, the tax increase that has been proposed. Council claims that they're short funded and they need to raise taxes. Many of us, and probably most of us in this room, have gone without pay adjustments or with a decrease in our net family income for the last few years because of the economy. Council increased the military rate to make up for that reduction, or at least part of it, maybe not the whole thing. But we didn't have that luxury. We had to adjust our budgets accordingly. So now, the home values are going up. Council wants to raise 18 percent our taxes. Well, why would you do that when the home values are going to go up and you're going to realize that revenue is from another source? Cherokee County just dropped their military rate for this very reason. And you forget in the Ronald Reagan model, the economy flourishes when taxes are reduced to a reasonable level and the revenue increases as well. Secondly, under the budget, amphitheater. The site was under five feet of rushing Class IV rabbits just a week ago. Now, in 17 years that I've lived here, I've seen that site and that park flood just about every other year. And that's not the fifth year of the 100-year event, that's the almost every other year. I think we need to think about this. Six Flags just announced they're bulldozing their amphitheater. That was in today's paper, to make way for an attraction that, in their words, will generate income instead of losing it. Now, folks, Six Flags is in business entertaining people and have a captive audience. If they can't make money off of an amphitheater, what makes us think that we can? Last, the streets. I'm going to talk about Great Sky. I've been in front of this council more than once. Anybody that wants to see the recent correspondence between me and the city is more than welcome to this email trail. For three years, I've been asking that my street in Great Sky and three others that have been legally accepted by the city be paved. Now, after three years of patience, my patience is over and so are the people that live in Great Sky. I can tell you this. The city attorney readily admits that there's no difference between any street that was accepted by the city and is maintained by the city, signature-wise, date-wise, and execution-wise, than those four streets in Great Sky. So, for the last seven years, you've been denying us, denying us, what our taxes are paid for. And we're sick of it. In bad faith, you've operated. Now, nobody's filed suit as of 6 o'clock tonight, but that's probably going to change tomorrow. I'm not going to join the class action suit yet. But, why would we sue ourselves when we know, we know that legally those streets belong to you? And I keep hearing you're going to hire a consultant, you're going to figure out what to do with the streets that weren't properly delivered to the city. You know, with all due respect to those folks, get in line. I've been waiting seven years. The people of Great Sky aren't going to wait any longer. So, if you're worried about your budget, you'd better grab a hold of your wallets because some folks are coming after it and they're going to get it. Bad faith, folks. Bad faith opens the bank, okay? That's on top of real damages. I would strongly urge the council to consider what they're doing. Anybody on the council can get a copy of the email trail that the mayor and I have been exchanging hook you to? You're more than welcome to read it. The facts are there. The papers were signed. You own the streets, you've owned them for seven years, and you will not take care of the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck, folks.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, audience. I don't see why we need to have a tax increase in Canton for 2014. $500,000 for adding nine firemen, what's the safety benefit in adding this personnel? I've not heard one and it won't increase response times. $300,000 to give employers raises, add a city inspector and equipment to the city police. If we were able to massage the budget and take the $300,000 that we have proposed for this amphitheater and use that, we would not need a tax increase. We would eliminate the $500,000 for the nine firemen, use the amphitheater money. We'd probably have to massage it because I know some of that sploesed money, but we could massage the budget and would not need a tax increase for 2014. We all do have a tax increase coming in 2014. Our water and sewage rates are going up and it'll cost most residents up to $100 extra in 2014. Gentlemen, we're hurting. Unemployment's high. We're underemployed. Some of us have lost our houses or losing our houses. Now is not the time to have a tax increase. Thank you.
Thank you. Roy Taylor.
Mayor, council. Good to see the public out. Staying very short, not getting into particular details, the sense of the budget as proposed with its increase seems to be an increase seeking a plan. How to develop the budget has to do with creating our needs, getting on paper, figuring out what that's going to cost, and sharing that load accordingly. I suspect that there could be an increase from most of the information that is put forward, but there are a number of things that, such as the increase in the fire, having to do with things that the department is not even asking for. How is, does the council is seeing better than the department that you've put in charge of being able to do that? Let's get a plan. We've talked about that. There's a number of, there's a commission, a future commission, that might be developing a plan. We don't have it yet. So, when we have a plan and we know what that plan will be, then we will have a time that we could discuss which parts of that plan should involve a tax increase. I think you could get the support of the people here for those kinds of projects that we collectively decide are important.
Thank you. Dwayne Tony.
Mr. Mayor, city councilman. My name is Dwayne Tony and I got a couple of agenda items. I'm going to have to read this because I haven't totally prepared, so I've got some stuff I need to read. First off, I want to talk about the 4.5 percent increase in the utility rates. Two years ago, my wife and I were called about a water bill being very high and we were told by the water department that everyone had a 30 percent increase in their water bills to be, to cover budget overrun. I'm assuming these budget overruns were due to the reservoir. And it's my understanding that the reservoir cost was 27 million, somewhere in there, but it went over 75 million over the original budget. And now, we're asking for another 4.5 percent increase in our water rates. Does this have something to do with covering more of the reservoir debacle? I just cannot comprehend why anyone, any company would need to raise their rates 35 percent in two years, much less municipal utility. Also, and on March 19th, we had a bond referendum hearing. The final report posted on that day, with, even with the low turnout of 6.3 voters, 6.3 percent of the voters, and overwhelmingly 70 percent voted no to the bond referendum, no to the fire stations, and no to the fire trucks. Why do we need to hire nine new firemen? At that time, the Canton Patch reported that if the bond referendum had passed, the insurance savings on the average household would be $36 per year. The tax rate on the same house would increase $296 per house. Had that bond referendum passed, Canton residents would have expected this tax increase without knowing that there was another proposed tax increase looming on the horizon. Now, we're faced with another proposed tax increase, but this one is different. This one is not in the hands of the voters. This one, this proposed tax increase will be decided by you, the city council members. And the residents of the city of Canton are at your mercy. How can you in good conscience raise our taxes, given the current state of our economy and the fragility which many of, not most, of the Canton residents are forced to live in this time? We are still in a recession. Many people have had no raises, including cost of living raises, for over five years. Many of the Canton residents have taken pay cuts to keep their jobs. I had to take a 10 percent pay cut and have not had a raise in over five years. My wife has had to go back to work just to make ends meet. Fuel costs are way up, they're over $3 a gallon. The cost of food has increased. Health insurance have increased. My company-sponsored health insurance went up 10 percent this year and they told us to expect 20 to 30 percent next year because of the Obama Affordable Healthcare Act. Yeah, affordable, right. People have quit spending money. They're not buying anything. They've cut everything out, vacations, new cars, et cetera. Employers are cutting hours to prepare for the Affordable Healthcare Act. Home Depot and Racetrack in Canton have cut employees' hours to less than 30 to prepare for the healthcare. And many people are working two and three jobs just to make ends meet. But given the current state of our economy, you are proposing an increase of 1.87 mils, up to 7.9 mils, which equates to 17.47 percent increase and a 4.5 percent increase in our water bill. The proposed budget for $36 million is up $5 million. I know at the last meeting, they said $3 million is to pay off debt and $2 million is for the budget, but to me, that's still $5 million increase. You already commended, however, when they stated at the last meeting, I hadn't been aware of it, but the last meeting it was stated, that you kept the same military rate or lower for the last eight years, and that's commendable. But now is not the time to raise the military. Also, at last meeting, one of the city council members stated that there was a $2.2 million in reserve. And, we went on to debate that 300,000 of it is currently in a dedicated reserve account, but the other 1.9 million was, I think they stated it was in a projected accumulated balance surplus that will be funded September 30th. Also, one of the council members stated that there was a 1.2, 1.3 million is what we needed in a reserve account for a city of our size. And I think it was you, Mr. Mayor, that stated that for the last four years, we've had a budget surplus. In place of the tax increase, why do you not move 1 million of the budget surplus to the reserve account and have a fully funded reserve account and use the other 0.9 million as an increase in the budget this year? The people of Canton cannot afford a tax or utility increase in today's economy. We have had a budget surplus for four years. Why do we need a 17.5 percent increase at this time? I don't understand. I do not understand how anyone in good conscience could believe that this tax increase is the right thing to do for the residents of the city of Canton. At this time, I implore that you vote no to the proposed tax budget. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ben Key.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. We've passed out the results of our special two-hour called Stormwater Advisor Board meeting and our review of the proposed budget for fiscal year 2014. You guys are really taking it on the chin tonight, so I'm going to try to get you guys a way out and lower utility fees, so. First page, you see on all these pages, far right column is what our Stormwater Advisor Board has proposed. It's almost identical to what was proposed by staff, with the exception of a couple of line items and then one major item on the revenue side. Scroll down the line to repairs and maintenance slash infrastructure. The requested budget from staff is $361,000. We believe that should be $261,700. Flip to the next page, there's a line by line detail of what those projects are. The first one is $90,000 for the Heritage Park Tribute Area. That's actually a carryover from fiscal year 2013. We budgeted $100,000 for that last year, only spent 10 of it. We are going to budget the remaining 90 for this year, but we're going to pay for that 90 out of the reserves that we already collected from last year. Going to replace the Waleska Street Bridge piers, or not replace, but just add a device in front of them to help the debris from the river not pile up and then cause problems there. And the other five projects are our street drainage projects, with the exception of the last one, $50,000 for miscellaneous drainage improvements, just as they come up and just kind of small projects here and there. And that's ultimately what the stormwater utility fund was designed to do. It's all about improving the quality of water. That's, that should be, and that's what my board looks at, you know, when we look at any project, is the end result going to be cleaner water. On down the list, the next item you'll see, capital outlays vehicle. Apparently, our street sweeper has reached its financial life as well as its physical life, it sounds like. I think we spent about $20,000 fixing it up last year. It was my board's recommendation that we pursue another capital lease on a street sweeper rather than a purchase. The $270,000 divided by the six years of estimated life is $45,000. You know, we were leasing combined interest and the lease payment at just about $31,500. I think this truck that they're wanting to get has a few more bells and whistles. Apparently, the technology in street sweeping has made leaps and bounds since six years ago, so we also want to have our streets swept the best, so. But we still think that, that we can lease one cheaper than we can buy one and from what staff has told us, at the end of their life, they're virtually worthless, so it's not like we're going to have, to be able to sell it at the end of its life and get recap again that money, so why not lease it? So, the bottom line, and one other item that we did add, was a contingency for $150,000. Some of you may or may not be aware, but during the flood last week, it's considerable damage to the riverbank at Bowling Park, very close to where you drive into the park. And if you had to build that road today, you couldn't, it's in the state buffer. And the bank is, the river's washed, caused some erosion, caused some large trees to fall, which moved a lot of dirt, and it's getting close to the road. So, we know we're going to have to fix that, but we, so recently, we don't have a bid for that. So, we have a contingency line item in the budget for $150,000. So, that brings our total bottom line of expenses to $911,342, which is a little bit less than your 1.13, $642 proposed budget from staff. The third page, you know, is the revenue side of the equation. You know, back when I joined the board in 2012, we had, we had American Chloro, our stormwater coordinator, reach out to all municipalities in the ARC that implement their stormwater program via stormwater utility fee. Of all the 39 municipalities that charge a fee, there are only three others in the entire state that have a fee as high or higher than ours. In 2011, the stormwater budget was $1.549 million. In 2012, it was $1.245 million. In 13, it was $1.128 million. This year, our proposed budget is $911,000. That's a 41 percent decrease in the budget from 2011. My question is, why do we need to charge taxpayers the same rate today as we did when our budget was 41 percent higher? According to Nathan Hingham CFO, we have accumulated a cash balance of approximately $600,000 in the stormwater fund. That's money that we've taken in from the taxpayers to clean water. It's my board's opinion that it's about time that we put some of that money to use and give them a break. So, we are proposing reducing the stormwater utility fee by 35 percent, which would bring your top line item on the revenue side to $682,500. We'll bring the penalties and interest down to $6,500 from $10,000, again, just applying a 35 percent decrease to the interest, penalties and interest income and the interest income. And then, taking $222,082 from that $600,000 that we've already paid in to cover the $911,342 budget. Even by using that $222,082, we're still going to have cash reserves of $377,918. And that's if we spend every dollar that we think we're going to spend, which in the past four years, we haven't been able to do that. So, my question to you guys is, why do we need the same rate today that we had in 2011 when our budget's 41 percent less and we've got $600,000 in the bank? To me, it's time to give this, to give the taxpayers a break. And I'd be happy to ask, answer any questions you guys have on this. We, we've covered it in detail at our board meeting a couple hours ago. You know, and this is the primary role for the Stormwater Advisor Board. You guys have more important things to worry about, it isn't just one little piece of your butt, you know, but we spend, you know, a good bit of time on it. And, you know, we made the recommendation last year, you guys didn't heed it, I thought I was going to get thrown off the board, I missed a meeting and now I'm the chair. So, I guess I will miss another meeting. But, again, we just asked that you guys, please, just consider our recommendation to reduce that rate by 35 percent. It just makes economic sense, it'd be a good gesture to the taxpayers, and we're still going to have plenty of money in the bank, you know, if and when those unforeseen disasters happen. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you very much for your time.
Ben, I'd just like to thank you for your hard work on this and all the advisory board as well, and we certainly will consider it. I also want to clarify, the purpose of these hearings are hearings, they're to hear what the taxpayers have to say. To my knowledge, nobody up here has made up their mind on the tax increase or not. So, so we are here to hear the proposed budget, like worst case, worst case scenario, which we have to do by law. The hearing, we need to have it at the highest and hopefully pare it down, reduce it some. So I just want everybody to understand that no one here has made up their mind, we're, we're here to listen.
Well, that's, well, that's good.
Thank you for your report.
Thank you. Thank you. Sandy Gerro?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, no. Go ahead.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
I'm Sandy Gerro, living in Great Sky. And I wanted to let you know that the citizens of Canton and all the citizens of the United States have tightened their belts to the point of cutting off their circulation. And right now, this time, most of us can't even feel our toes. It would be naive to think that at this point, that there would never be a tax increase. The police deserve a raise, they put their lives on the lines every day, and they certainly do deserve a raise in our vote of confidence. The firefighters certainly deserve a raise, they put their life on the line every day, they deserve all of our support. I do support their pay increase if they were to get one. But rather than hiring nine new firefighters, I wonder if it might be to our benefit to invest in the firefighters that we already have. They're wonderful people, they're smart, they're brave, they're strong, they do their job incredibly well. But I wonder, would it be better for us to invest in their future with their pay increase and their education? Give them more training. If we invest in their training, we're also investing in their safety and ultimately in the safety of our citizens. That would show our firefighters and our policemen, too, that we, we value them, we respect them, and we put them above ourselves. Our city workers deserve a raise, and apparently so does our city council. But let me tell you, I firmly believe that 18% at one time is too much for the citizens of Canton. We've tightened our belts, we cannot feel our toes. Did you know that there's a town in Texas that if the council is going to increase their city taxes more than 5%, that must go to a vote before the citizens? Gentlemen, now is not the time to cash in on your wish list.
Okay, that's all we have, my comments, Mr. Bishop, you had a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I want to thank the Stormwater Group for gathering together and bringing forward this information. And one of the concerns that I had is that this group, along with other committees that we voted on to put on these different boards and committees and authorities, are all not in compliance. And appreciate the hard work they're doing, but we have let the very key part slide for this many months. In the city charter, that I'm sure Mr. Cummings is well aware of, Charter, Section 3.11F, no member of the board, commissions, or authority shall assume office until he or she has executed and filed with the clerk of the city an oath of obligation, himself or herself, to faithfully and impartially perform the duties of his or her office. Such oath to be prescribed by ordinance and administered by the mayor. I'm not aware of that oath being taken, and there's no documents that have been done. So I think what we need to do is to get this accomplished so that we can have these committees being in compliance with the different charter and state laws. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else on the council who want to make a comment?
Mr. Mayor, fellow council members, Mr. Barrister, the pastor is correct in saying that we are elected to make decisions, but those decisions must fall within the overriding principle that we are charged with, and that is to provide needed governmental services to Canton citizens in the most qualitative and efficient manner and in the most cost-effective way. We are elected to listen to our citizens and make all decisions in a non-political and non-biased way that best serves those citizens. The 2014 budget, as it is proposed, does not meet this overriding principle, and has unnecessary expenditures for services not needed contained therein. It also includes services that fall outside the pure definition of needed, such as parks and recreation. But the provision of these services should have a low priority relative to the basic needs of our citizens. Streets maintenance, infrastructure maintenance of water, sewer, and stormwater utilities should have a much higher priority than new parks containing amphitheaters with expensive roofing systems. The nine firefighters proposed are unnecessary and are a waste of taxpayer dollars. According to the budget submitted by the fire chief, not a single additional firefighter was requested, but Mr. Huffman and other council members believe that they are needed, and now he's willing to compromise and not only hire five. I will grant that having more personnel does provide an additional benefit, but the benefit is not justified by the cost. Hiring a single fireman is an unneeded expense and a waste of taxpayer dollars. A minimal incremental improvement received is significantly outweighed by the cost incurred. The first justification used by some of my colleagues was that we needed this additional staff to get a lower ISO of three, and that rating would generate significant insurance savings for citizens and businesses in Canton. But as shown in a prior council meeting by using substantiated studies and our own ISO report, that hiring additional fire department staff will at best generate insignificant insurance savings. I have asked the council members who believed that an ISO three would produce significant insurance rate savings, to produce studies showing this, but to this day, all they have provided is hearsay. My agent says I will save $40. If insurance costs are such a big incentive to businesses, why are many located in the unincorporated area of the county instead of within Canton or Woodstock? And Canton, besides, Canton can eventually get to an ISO three without hiring any firemen. Now, instead of using ISO, the current buzzword used by some council members is public safety. Hiring these nine firemen will add two per shift, one at each fire station, and this fourth fireman on the truck is really only useful for fire calls. Or we can send out three trucks at one time instead of two when that seldom requirement arises. And even if we must respond to three incidents at one time, the to-be-completed automatic aid agreement with the county would probably provide us backup service for calls we are unable to respond to immediately. Of the 1,435 incidents, the first half of this year, only 60 were classified as fire, that is 4.2% of the total incidents. I do not have statistics as to how many times we've had three incidents at one time and could have used three trucks, but I'm told that there were no incidents that were not handled satisfactorily. Do we staff at a cost of $500,000 per year additional firefighters to address only 4.2% of the incidents? The answer might be yes, if there was not already in place supplemental resources to handle the rare major incidents that arise acquiring additional staff. But there are supplemental resources available. To illustrate this, I use as an example the Canterbury Ridge incident of May 25th, 2012. Total personnel on the scene working were 110, with 68 from Cherokee County, 13 from Woodstock, one from Holly Springs, and 28 from Canton, of which 17 of those were police. These resources were from both the police and the fire departments. Would have two more inexperienced firemen on the scene improved the outcome? I think not. Even if more staff would provide Canton some benefit, there has been no consideration of using volunteers for these rare occasions. Instead, there has been an impulsive push to hire nine more employees at a very expensive cost. I personally believe that this push to hire more firemen is purely political. Some council members may think that by increasing staff, the county will not have any interest in pursuing consolidation. But contrary to this belief, the higher the costs for fire services become for Canton Fire Department, the more attractive consolidation looks. Without some form of consolidation or joint venture with the county, the Laurel Canyon Station will not be built. And whether someone voted yes or no in our recent referendum, most all voting want a station there, but just had a difference of opinion as to who should build that station, Canton or Cherokee County. The city does not have the money to build it, and the county will not build it unless this council quits criticizing them and begins to work cooperatively with them. We need to solidify our mutual aid agreement and enter into an automatic and training center usage agreements with Cherokee County and not waste our valuable taxpayer dollars on unneeded firemen. There are, within the budget, other manipulations of expenditures used to lower the general fund total expenditures. We have removed from general fund expenditures some debt service and placed it in SPOSS six. How many people know that we are using twisted English semantics to justify making the payment of prior obligations for the YMCA property and the building, and building, and the City Hall from future SPOSS six revenues? How many people would have voted yes to SPOSS six if they knew that $785,226 was being used to pay for prior debt on a facility they cannot even use without paying a membership fee? The same holds true for our City Hall, where $354,830 is being used. It is estimated that the end of fiscal 2013, Canton will have an unassigned balance of Now, that's a floating figure because things change as they work on the budget. The unassigned balance, which is somewhat misunderstood by the public, is really surplus funds or accumulated dollars from previous years when actual expenditures were less than that which was budgeted. The 2014 budget going forward is planning to use $820,000 from this unassigned balance. That leaves $1510,710 in reserves. Another manipulation that is a guesstimate is allocations. We remove $403,475 of expenditures from the general fund and allocate those expenditures into water and sewer, sanitation, stormwater, and admin impact fees. And this does not include the personnel employed and directly charged to those separate funds. I have identified budget areas of concern and question, but until now have not suggested any solutions. It's easy to say what is wrong, but more difficult to come up with alternatives. So here are my suggestions. Number one, keep the millage at 6.8. That will create a budget shortfall of $800,000. Do not spend the $500,000 on any fire department staff increases. Budget shortfall now falls to $300,000. Give the 3% increase to non-exempt personnel only. Savings approximately $50,000. Budget shortfall is now $250,000. Question I ask, do we in this economy want to give, and I'm gonna mention to certain positions, the city manager a $4,500-plus increase, the police chief $2,800-plus, the fire chief $2,200? I don't think that's wise in this, these economic times. Utilize $250,000 more from the unassigned, this is number four, from the unassigned balance or the surplus. The budget shortfall now becomes zero. We have a balanced budget and no tax increase, and we still have $1.25 million in our unassigned balance or reserve. $300,000 was set aside by Mr. Rush, I believe it was 300, it might have been 350, not ever to be touched except for a specific designation, but still we've had sufficient reserves. There is probably another $750,000 of overbudgeting in the 2014 proposed budget anyway, just as there was in the 2013 budget. So the additional $250,000 extra will most likely not be needed. But to prevent future budgetary problems, there needs to be a significant approach change, instead, approach change. Instead of treating the budget process as an annual event, we need to implement a continual review process. We need to start thinking outside the box and quit assuming how we view things today is how we should be doing them next year. We need to perform constant function reviews and determine if there are other ways to provide the same service levels at lower cost. An example, which was my suggestion during the budgeting process, is that we are budgeting in the 2014 budget, $45,000 for contracted park maintenance for Edoah instead of hiring new employees and purchasing new equipment. We should review all groundskeeping and public works assignments and determine if there are significant savings to be realized. We should look at outsourcing some functions to see if such an approach is more economical. City management should conduct ongoing critical analysis of how all functions are performed and look at, look actively at alternative approaches. City management should have in place a critical review process of every expenditure when it is about to be approved and incurred. If it is not substantially justified, even though it's budgeted, the expenditure should be not made. I would, at this time, like to motion that we instruct the city manager to make these few simple changes suggested and come to the August 22nd, 3rd, and final hearing with a balanced budget that maintains the current millage rate of 6.8 mills. Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments?
Yes, sir. Did you have something to go? Yes, sir. I wasn't prepared for the speech. I didn't realize this was gonna be the council participating in the hearing. I thought we were supposed to listen. However...
We can discuss among ourselves, but the public input period is basically closed. This is just for our discussion.
I got you. Good, good, good. Well, most everything Mr. Cummings says makes a lot of sense, and that's actually what's been going through my mind, and I think some of our other minds. The reason we have a 2.2 or 2.3 million dollar surplus is because of sound fiscal management and proper use of resources by our staff over the last five years. When, when we took office, that 2.2 million was 200,000, 260,000. We had $62 million in debt. That's been reduced by almost 20 million. We're getting ready to possibly have to borrow 7 million to build a new wastewater plant. That can't be helped, but we're gonna get that at like 1% interest. One of the first things we did four years ago was... One of the first things we did four years ago was cut 22 people from the payroll. Put it in perspective, that was about 20% of the employees. Put them out on the street, $500,000 savings in payroll. That was the worst thing I've ever had to do in my life. We'll never get over that. I mean, I still see people that we had to let go. We weren't going to make payroll six months after that, had we not done that? We know about belt tightening. We've been up here getting paid $2,000 a year while the Woodstock City Council gets $10,000 or something like that. Not a big deal. Those of us that are rolling off will not see the much touted increase at all. We're not doing this for the pay. So I think that it is a good possibility to leave the millage rate alone. The millage rate, we've seen it drop. We've seen it go slightly up, but overall it's dropped. Revenues from property taxes are down by, what, over a million dollars over the last two or three, four years, two years? Down over a million dollars. The projects we've done, the beautiful Etowah Park, when the revenue is cut later this year, it'll be a debt-free facility. We're not going to owe it down on that part. The Canton Theater, a year or so ago, was almost dead. We were criticized for bringing in these movies. Well, the movies are a roaring success. We've got sponsors lined up for the next year for these free movies. They're not going to cost the city anything. Corporate sponsoring people have stepped out. People, I'm understanding is there's been some standing ovations after some of these movies. There were a lot of naysayers about that. Canton Theater, that's wasted the money, throw the money down the rat hole. The new amphitheater, folks, it's going to be the same way. That's going to bring people, it's visionary thinking, long-term foresight thinking. That's going to be a success. It may not be immediately, but it will be. It'll be great for our city. I think that we have a lot of work to do in the next week. We'll come to a conclusion this time next week. I hope everybody's here at board. And I think you'll be pleased with, as well as we can be, with what you see next week. The much touted fire bomb, you know, we could have just voted to borrow the money and build the fire stations without the public aid, but we sought that out. We wanted to hear what y'all had to say. You told us that you don't want fire stations, and guess what? You were right. The ISO report indicated we don't need to build fire stations. This Laurel Canyon Fire Station doesn't need to be built. We got two fire stations now, we're covered. Our greatest asset is our people in this city, not the stuff, not the brakes and the morning of the fire trucks, we got all that. The nine firefighters, some of us feel like we need, that's not all this year. At most, we would hire three this year, possibly three next year, possibly six. The new council, they vote to take that completely out next year. That's their discretion. It'll just be in the budget. We can do that, as Mr. Cummins said, without raising the millage rate at all. So I just want y'all to understand, this is a process. We're in process. I've heard from one citizen has sought out me to tell me their opinion of the tax increase, one citizen. That's it. We do need to hear board from y'all. Some of you have said you don't have a problem with the tax increase. They heard that last week, the week before last, the proposed tax increase. I don't want to pay you more taxes. I got a lot of property I paid taxes on. I sure as heck don't want any more. So if we can do it without it, we're going to do it without it. But we also have responsibilities and obligations to fulfill. These employees haven't had a raise in, what, three years? We're talking a modest proposed increase. The police department has to remain competitive. We're losing good officers to surrounding communities because we don't pay as much as they do. We have to do certain things. You know, it's not easy. But anyway, that's, again, so many other things. I'm not really prepared to talk. Maybe next week I'll have a little more. But anyway, I want to thank you for listening. Thank you for your great ideas, and let's continue this dialogue and have it written.
Mr. Mayor?
Mayor, sit. Sure. I think it's important for the citizens and the council to understand that this process is not a matter of just cracking open a book or looking at some line item numbers and saying, this is enough. We have to do research. What this chart shows, there's three charts here. I'd like for you to look at the first chart at the bottom. It's the population. Back in 2000, we were just sitting around, 7,000 people. And over the past 12 years, you see this gradual increase. Actually, it's not a gradual, it's a pretty good increase of the population of this city. So when we're talking about tightening the belt and doing everything else, at the same time, we're putting in more services for our citizens. So it does impact us. So we got to look at that aspect. Now, if you look up at the revenue, you'll see the revenue started back in 2002 and gradually increased through the golden era of time. We had the population increasing, we had taxes coming in, so therefore, we were looking at a great growth rate parallel to the population coming in. But when we hit the old proverbial wall back in 2008, 2009, we peaked out with the revenue, then all of a sudden, we went crashing down. We ran out of funds that we needed and were developing and planning on. So the process had a change. Now, what's really interesting is, for the people who've lived here a long time, the millage rate was 8.25 back in 2000. That, to me, was a startling number. For some reason, I always kind of figured that we had a growth increase over this period of time with the rate, millage rate going up and tracking along similar to what was going on here. But because of the influx of population, because the revenue was coming in, there was a decrease in millage. And I've heard many times people say politicians get a tax increase, they never give back. Well, interesting enough, the city did respond to that. Then we got into the critical timeframe here, 2008, 2009. We had to have an increase. We did. And then we maintained that for four years. It's flat. But at the same time, that population grew, the revenue failed, but we were able to maintain. And that's what we're trying to do here. And with the additional input, Mr. Cummins, and coming up with a number of ideas and saying, look at this, look at that, we're coming with an open mind. I know that everybody feels sometimes the council just sits there and does not listen. But we have. We have responded, and what we're going to try to do is give the citizens of this city the best services possible with the least amount of impact on your personal income so that we can achieve those goals and give you that service. One other point I want to make, we have an outstanding staff here in this city that does not do the normal government function. Normal government function, as we all know, each department, it's a budget, and that department's responsibility is to spend up to the maximum of that budget so that next year, they can get an increase because they spent all their budget money. How do we end up each year with a surplus? It's because we have dedicated employees that care about the funds that you citizens give the city, and they spend it wisely. Thank you.
Anyone else have a comment? Is there any correction that we need to give our staff based on the conversation and what we've heard here in preparation of the next public hearing on the 22nd?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
There was a tremendous amount of input that Mr. Cummins laid on us just a little while ago, and believe us, we have been looking at different alternatives, but I think just the state will support that right now. I don't think what we need to do is, digestion will get, then we'll get to Mr. Wood and say, here's what we need to do, so.
Okay. Mr. Cummins, you will transmit your thoughts, if you haven't already.
I have the email list of our dissertation.
Yeah, you know...
How many pages was it? Because I'm only sure I've got enough of my printing.
Well, I'm sure you can get any card or do seven.
Oh, okay. Yeah, thank you.
During, I would like to say thanks particularly to those, the Stormwater Advisory Board, because they did put a lot of work into that, and there's two or three, maybe four of them here still with us. And, you know, they were able basically on their proposal to keep the same, almost the same expenditures that was proposed in the original budget, but yet be able to reduce that stormwater fee under their proposal. Now, I have, as most of you know, I've wanted to reduce that stormwater fee probably since the second year I came, and it hasn't been, I haven't been able to do so. And of course, last year, we looked at it and the council decided that wasn't what they wanted to do. I hope the council will this time really consider that because expenses are there. We leave about $400,000 in there as basically contingency or fund balance in it, so, you know, in case something happens, you got $400,000 in that anyway. And particularly with the knowledge that every year, we've had more revenues than expenditures. Those things there indicate to me it's time for us to give some of that money back to people that's been paying. It's not much, but it's time to get it back if we're not, we don't just need to accumulate the money. That's my opinion. And I do think that we would, should be able to, certainly my opinion is we should be able to get by without a general fund budget of increasing the millage more than it is currently at 6.8 mills. I mean, it's just really the three items, and one of which we really can't do anything about because we've already voted that, that mayor and council salaries, the personnel salaries, and of course, nine firemen, those three items make up by far the majority of the 6.8 mill increase. Now, I'm not saying we just take those three, but we should be able to go through that budget and add some of the ideas that Mr. Cummins has had and others here and whittle that down. There's no reason we can't survive on 6.8 mills for the next 12 months. All right. Any other commensurate questions? If not, I entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Somebody?
Got a motion and a second? Those in favor say aye. Those no? Okay. All members of the motion. Now, we will call the meeting to order, a regular council meeting, and I would ask that each of you stand and join me while we pledge allegiance to the flag. Please stand in for the inauguration.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we thank you for this privilege of coming here tonight, and thank you for the beautiful weather you provided for each one and our health. We ask that you be with our troops throughout the world, and we ask that you just let each one of us have an open mind to make this city better. Always thankful, pray in your name.
We have some special guests here tonight, and special visitors here, and we have a couple of proclamations that we were requested to provide. And the first one is the proclamation for Constitution Week, and we'd ask our guests to come forward for that, and they are, she is in costume, by the way, as you can tell. She doesn't dress that way all the time, so. This proclamation has to do with Constitution Week, and I will read it. September the 17th, 2013 marks the 226th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, providing a historic opportunity for all Americans to remember the achievements of our founding fathers and to reflect on the actions of Americans who for the past 226 years have defined the words of the Constitution by exercising their rights and responsibilities as citizens. And whereas the Constitution is fundamentally predicated on governance by we the people, making citizens, understanding of the Constitution and its framework in an essential element of future, of the future of our country and the civic health of its populace. And whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document, the anniversary of its creation, and where it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commence the occasion. And whereas public law 915 guarantees issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September the 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Gene Hugood, Mayor of the City of Canton, on behalf of the Daughters of the American Revolution, High Tower Trail Chapter, do hereby proclaim September the 17th through the 23rd to be the Constitution Week in the City of Canton, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787.
Do you have any, if you want to make any comments you want to?
We just, if you don't know what the Daughters of the American Revolution is, it's a patriotic group. We are all lineal descendants of persons who either fought in or aided in the effort to have freedom for our country during the Revolutionary War. And we like to be active in schools, promoting patriotism, the Constitution. We work with veterans, go to the veterans' hospitals, and we have speakers available. Please call on us, schools, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts. We need to promote patriotism.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. You keep that. We have one other, support our seniors. Keep trying to keep that senior exemption in there now.
No comment.
That's probably wise. Okay. Let me read this proclamation. Whereas the Cherokee County Volunteer Agent Council will hold its 13th Annual Major Fundraiser on Saturday evening, August 24th, at the gloves in Canton. And whereas the Volunteer Agent Council's major financial support goes to the Mills on Wheels, which serves over 50,000 meals to seniors in our county each year at an annual cost of around $250,000. And whereas the state budget cuts and local waiting lists, seniors in Cherokee County need our help to support this program. And whereas Support Our Senior Day will provide the opportunity for cities within the county to contribute time, ideas, and dollars to help our seniors. Therefore, in order to promote the Cherokee County Volunteer Agent Council's annual fundraiser, we do hereby proclaim August 24th, 2013, as Support Our Seniors Day at City of Canton.
I thought Nathan was going to go before me. And let, thank you very much, Council, so very, very much for supporting this worthwhile organization. I am so glad to be able to talk about it. I think Nathan will probably tell you more of what he actually does there at the Senior Center. But I wanted to make enough to say that the top hat is downstairs. I know you... I know you noticed it when you came in. It is for any funds that you have, Mayor Council, the public, to help the seniors in need in Cherokee County. All the cities in Cherokee County are challenging each other, so let's have a good amount deposited into that top hat so that the City of Canton can win that event. And we also thank you, I think, for the mayor for the day. We're going to do that as an auction item, and we want to say thank you, Mayor Huckgood, for that.
That did good. Worked out really well last year. It really did. It really does to have someone come in and, you know, and actually kind of follow me around for a day and go to the council meeting that night and maybe meet with others and people, citizens coming in or everything. It's really, really quite interesting, and I think the individual who had that last year was, really had a great time.
She did, I talked to her. And people do not realize, the public does not always realize what goes on with elected officials or with the staff here. And as a retired city clerk, I just want to say, sometimes it is difficult to understand, but I think you do a great job, and thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say I appreciate so much the support of the mayor and the council. We are enjoying our first year of a newly renovated facility. The continuing delivery of the meals is probably the best known effort we've put forward. We've just completed the fan drive, delivering fans to seniors, we did that for the summer. But we appreciate this, and if y'all want to come out and dance a week from Saturday, just come. If you don't, if you're like me, you just sit there and watch those who do. So thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So if anybody would like a ticket to the event, I have those, if you will let me know or let Susan know, she can get in touch with me. I'd be glad to get you a ticket. Thank you.
Take care. Just time, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Just one, yeah, under item, whole business item D, it says update. I will be making a motion on that item at that time. Notation for everybody. Well, we have a motion in a second to approve the agenda as presented. Nothing else on that. Those in favor, six to five, saying aye. Opposed, no? All members voting for the motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Can I just say something? This is not on the agenda, just making space.
Sure.
We had our police and fire department last week put on an excellent program for the National Night Out, and it was well attended over here in Round Park. And I want to say thanks to the police department, fire department for putting on an excellent program, and it was excellent because we saw a lot of interaction of citizens talking to these important individuals. And a lot of times, people don't know us, and this is a great opportunity, so I want to thank you for that very much.
All righty, thank you. You have in your package the August first, two thousand thirteen minutes. Are there any changes, corrections to those? If not, we have a motion to approve, not second. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor, six to five, saying aye.
Aye. That was not your selection.
Yeah. All members, with the exception of Mr. Cummings and Mr. Bexford, voting for the approval of the amendments. Okay, under our ten-minute public input period, I think Mr. Wyndham had signed up on the wrong sheet here. Also, we had Bob, did you want to speak in this public input period as well?
Yes, yes.
Okay, well, you are signed up. I didn't know if that was a mistake or not. Come on up. We're doing it.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I just have a question to ask. I'm not going to be able to make the public meeting at two P M. on, for Canton Co., I'll be working. But I do have a concern is how is the city, I'm just going to ask a question whether you answer it or not. How is the city protected if the developer goes bankrupt with the bonds that we're going to be submitting? I think, if memory serves me, we're going to do twelve million dollars on a thirteen million dollar endeavor, and the developer is responsible for paying those fines off. But if he goes bankrupt, who's going to pay the bond?
My guess is, and I think this is something we ought to go ahead and introduce. I get that question a couple of times, and this has occurred in the past, and it's my understanding, and always has been, that the, I assume the real estate and the developers themselves stand good for that, for that long. The city in no way has a, has a financial obligation in that transaction. Is that your understanding?
Yes. And obviously, we have to make sure the paperwork said that, as long as there's nothing obligating us to tax anyone to pay that, but yeah.
We're not, I don't think this council is going to obligate ourselves on any bonds like that, that where we would have an obligation to pay if the owner there of the property, something happened there. We're not going to do that. Mr. Mayor, what did Mr. Bexford, do you have something?
Yes, sir. And I know it comes up on the agenda here, so should we wait? Because I want to respond. I'll respond to you.
Okay, we're going to be, that is actually, let's see.
Our discussion's on the agenda tonight, so hopefully you can.
It's going to be on the agenda, so we'll discuss that and further as soon as we get to that item on the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that was all we had on the ten-minute public input period. We have items considered on the consent agenda. The two items we have on the consent agenda, action on Badcock Furniture Tap Fees, if I remember correctly, we agreed to the amount that the city would have charged had it been in the city, what we would have required, which I believe was around twenty-eight thousand.
Twenty-five.
Twenty what?
Twenty-eight five.
Twenty-eight five, okay. And then the item B, action on a quick plane needed to release temporary construction easement over us partway. Now, we have had some discussion since that time with the Badcock folks, but as far as I know, Mr. Wood has done some research to reaffirm that that, what was, what was required, or at least what was put in, would have been required by the city, and then the city's costs would have been what we're, we paid, for them to pay, which was the twenty-eight thousand. Any other comments or anything about that? These are on the consent agenda, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor, six to five, saying aye. Opposed, no? All members voting for the consent agenda. Under old business, the action on one hundred and fifteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-four dollar contract with Barco paving for the L. N. project, which are city street resurfacing. We have any discussion or questions about that? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Any other discussion? If not, those in favor, six to five, saying aye. Opposed, no? All members voting for the motion. Item B, in whole business, action on thirty-nine thousand two hundred and eighty-four dollar contract with Integrated Construction and Nobility Inc. for East Marietta sidewalk painting. Mr. Wood, you want to add anything to that?
No, sir, I believe we've discussed it last week.
Okay, now, that, that will go from where to where?
That will go from Marcher down to the four ways.
Okay. Any other questions about that? For folks, yes, from Marcher straight down here.
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second. Have a second. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor, six to five, saying aye. Opposed, no? All members voting for the motion. Action on Canton, on approval for Canton Housing Authority to issue bonds for Canton Co., Senior Living Development. Okay, I would back that. Mr. Bexford, did you say you had something on that?
Yes, sir, I do. First of all, I just want to say, I think what the plan is, the elevations of the property, we did have something some years ago that we were looking at for that location that didn't pass. This one looks like a great, it's a, it's a project that is well needed in our city. It could be utilized in our city. It'll take care of a number of senior citizens, et cetera. The thing that I have a problem with, in the article in the paper, it said, should Canton Co. default on its bond debt service payment, the developer is on the hook. Well, I don't know if that's legalese or what type of comment that is, but to me, it doesn't mean a heck of a lot. Developer's on the hook. The housing authority will be issuer of the bonds, that's us, the city, but neither the housing authority nor the city will be financially liable for the bonds. I, and I hate to bring up an old issue here, but we have in the county right now this issue with BOBO. I don't know how they're similar or not similar, but that, to me, is like, are we going to fall into a similar situation? We just heard the city attorney say, we're looking at the program to make sure we're free and clear. Two points. One, a lot of people out here have done business plans in their life, business, and when you put a business plan together, you put it with your own funds, monies, and you don't look at the government. We've got to a point now where every time you turn around, you're looking for the government to give you a certain amount of bailout to put a business, get in a business. And what happens is it falls back to the taxpayers. We heard from the taxpayers tonight about these types of situations. I want to have ironclad guarantee, we are not going to be looking at a BOBO situation. I don't know how it could be written or how it could be involved. I think the project should be brought on, move ahead, but I don't want to be here and be one of the people that voted yes, and two years from now, we are looking at an obligation that says, well, it shouldn't have happened. Thank you.
Well, I can assure you that I won't be signing any document that has some agreement or contract that obligates the city in case of default. I can assure you that.
This vote's not going to make that happen. So, and the motion can be, motion to approve it so long as.
Along with what Mr. Bexford has asked, I know that when we use the Canton Building Authority or Canton Housing Authority, when they borrow bonds, those bonds are secured by the good faith and credit of the city. My question is, what is the security behind these bonds? If I understand correctly, the mechanics of wanting to do this is so that they can issue those bonds, and those bonds would be treated like municipal bonds so that interest would not have to be paid at a federal level because they were municipal. What secure, what secures those bonds? For the city, it's our good faith and credit. What is it for the developer or for this organization? What security do we have? I think that goes to Mr. Dyer to answer. What security do we have that guarantees that the housing authority would receive the money and be able to make the bond principal and interest payments?
The housing authority, the way I understand it is, it's actually done without their involvement. It's a bank made a loan to the developer, and it may pass through the housing authority technically, but the housing authority is not making the payment, the developer is.
The housing authority then has absolutely no responsibility, as long as that's in writing, then it's roughly.
I think, I think y'all have been very crystal clear on what you want. We just, the only way you're obligated is by paper, signed by, with a vote, and a vote. This vote's not obligating anybody anything. This is just approval of the idea, really. But the Canton Loft Department, I mean, the Cotton, you know, the Texas Loft, that was done the same way.
I think if we just have a motion that we concur or approve the housing authority issued those bonds with the stipulation, with the understanding that the city has no obligation under that, the issuance of those bonds.
And the housing authority. Because if the housing authority had responsibility, what?
They have no assets anyway.
They have no assets, but it would impact our ability to use the housing authority in any future project if they were part of the default, would it not?
The only way the city is going to have any repercussions is if you agree to that. And you're not agreeing to that. The housing authority can't agree that anything is going to impact the city. So, but they, but they, they're not going to be obligated either, and that's the plan. If they, if they mistakenly do that, I guess that's on them, but.
Then it falls on others.
No, it does not fall. No, it's confusing the building authority where the city was actually doing, using the building authority as the vehicle. This is not the city doing it at all. This is the housing authority doing it all, it's a.
Well, it has primarily approval by the housing authority to have revenue bonds issued to partner fund the seventy-nine unit assisted living, et cetera, et cetera.
But obviously, the housing authority doesn't have the money. It comes from a bank. It's supposed to.
It's supposed to. But right now.
Okay, you throw the wording out before we make a vote and get it. So we have it locked.
This vote does not obligate you to do anything. If, if they break you a piece of paper later that makes the city obligated to pay, we'll say so, and you'll vote no. I don't even think this will come back to the city again. I think this is the only vote you're going to take.
Then assemble. I think the motion will be on the vote. Because if we have absolutely nothing to do with it, have no obligation whatsoever, then why are we voting on an issue that has?
I think, I'm trying to, it's inside the city, and they want to make sure the city governing authority concurs that it's okay to have something like that here.
There's a couple, there's a couple of things going on. There's HUD requirements, and then there's tax that they're trying to get. The HUD requirements require evidence of local support. That's all this is. This is evidence of local support.
Well, you just offer a motion that says that you approve this project with the understanding that the City of Canton will not be responsible for the assumption of or guarantee of any debt associated with the project whatsoever. Here's.
Second motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I would like to make the motion that we approve to Canton Housing Authority issue bonds for Canton Co. Senior Living Development with the proviso that the City of Canton will not be liable for any payments should the default occur.
Have a motion, second. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor, six to five, saying aye. Opposed, no? All members voting for the motion. Okay. Discussion of management of athletic recreational programs at city parks.
This it is. This it is.
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped that. Update on the street improvement program.
Work in progress. We've all discussed that. We've got, I think, interviews set up with four consulting firms thus far. We're probably going to add a fifth. Once we've gone through that process and developed a recommendation, we'll bring that back to City Council. But those interviews start, I believe, the latter part of next week.
Any, any comments on that?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to mention a consideration to approve the agenda that I intended to make a motion. As we know, the development in this city is starting to turn around, and we have a lot of areas that are going to start incurring new development. And I'd like to make the motion that building permits be withheld on construction on any residential lot where the street and connecting streets upon which the construction is proposed have not been completed to city standards and accepted by the city for perpetual maintenance unless a performance bond in a sufficient amount guaranteeing such completion has been That's my motion. If I get a second, I'm going to go into discussion.
Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Good. Okay, any other discussion? I'll be honest with you, I think it's, I think it's a good idea because this, this will begin to put this process hopefully in motion. will begin to put this process hopefully in motion, process that we've been needing for some time.
Mayor, I, I agree wholeheartedly with, with the motion, but I only have one concern, and that's an area where we've had subdivisions that have, the builders have gone belly up. And then the new developer has come in and he's got a street that's under, not fully finished to city standards, and he's going, wants to start building. Are we going to require that developer to finish all the streets? We may, and then he's got to put performance bonds. We may, we may hamper development if we do something like that. I'm not, I don't know what the solution is, but that's just a concern that I have.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, and I, I think we've, we've got to put this bond in somebody else's park right now. We've got to, we've got to put it over there. We will let them worry about how they're going to get that performance bond. The performance bond on most of these streets will not be a really excessive amount because we're only talking about the top coating. We're not talking about what it would have been when the subdivision first put in place, which would have been awesome, really. But now, if they put enough in there just, just to, an amount adequate to, to finish the streets, I mean, that's what we need to do. Now, of course, we may have some court cases on this, I don't know, but I think, I think we've got to get off dead center and do something that way, but I, I think it's a good idea.
What, in discussion, if I might say, what initiated this, there is underway, and a building plan has been submitted to the city. No, no request for permits yet for what they call the Franklin Park area of River Green, which has approximately 60 lots. They're going to build 200 townhouses. The streets appear to have the base coat. How good a shape it's in, I'm not expert enough to answer, but it has no bond. And if we do not initiate this kind of action, we are going to increase the number of streets that we could end up forcing taxpayers to have to pay to finish as these builders depart. It's a, that particular area has 60-some lots. I've passed out a little bit of a diagram. I apologize for not much, you know, not coming out of the copy, not coming out too well. But there's probably 2,500 to 3,000 feet of street there that has just base at this point in time, and it's going to be put together by a series of corporations, Little House Builders, a liability corporation, and it's, that is comprised of JOC Properties and Jeremy Rutenberg and Associates. And we do not have any way, once that builder finishes building in there, of enforcing the top coating of those streets. You could pull out and say, well, I was just the builder, not my responsibility. And then we could go up the chain, and then say, well, it's not my responsibility. I think by putting this in, we force those performance bonds so that if they intend to build, we do have the mechanics to ensure that the city taxpayers do not incur the cost of finishing those streets. And according to Mr. Patton, we have 16 miles of questionable streets in the city now, and if it was just a top coat, we're looking at one and a half million, and they probably need more than just top coating. That's a $2 million exposure, and I want to prevent the additional adding of more streets to the problem that we already have. And where we can, these existing streets try and force developers that are still there to put performance bonds there so that they can continue development in other areas. And in talking with Mr. Dyer, this would, this motion would accomplish that purpose, correct?
That's correct.
Yes, sir.
On this plant, where the street ends on that platform to the lots, then it goes over to River Green, there is a street section there that will not be anything. It's an alleyway, or it's a.
Like the, that's an alleyway.
And it's similar to the Hidden Valley situation. They're down there, there's only one way to get in, there's only one way to get out. And this is heavily, heavily used right now for those residents who are down in this area, and what that should be part of the plant, or when we look at these plants, we should say, that's got to connect to a city street.
It probably does, is if you look to the, I draw, I tried to draw a line through the middle of it, and if you look to the left, that is finished now. And I believe those are, those are city streets and our finished top coat. To the far left, and that's Riverbend, and they do have a connection on Riverbend into that community.
Yes, they do. That part over on Riverbend, and it comes up, and if you follow that up to that first left-hand turn, that top coat stops there.
It stops there.
It stops there. What I'm talking about is that little section right there that goes over, doesn't go to our city street. It ends, and who would pick that piece up? And that's, that's another piece of it. So, I support. But we need to have that type of stuff looked at and saying, wait a minute, you just don't end it there, you've got to bring it into a city street.
I'm just afraid, if I might say, that now with the building starting to go in the opposite direction and increasing, that a lot of these areas that were abandoned are being now picked up by builders, and they're going to try and get away without any responsibility for the partially finished streets. And I would like to prevent that because I don't think the citizens or the taxpayers should pay for the finishing of those streets. While we may build 60 townhouses in that community, they ought to be setting aside some money to take care of, I believe there are three possible streets in there, one of which is Oakview Drive, Oakview Passage, and the continuation of Brooks Drive. But anyway, that's my motion.
Anyone else? I believe he did say, he did already there, so.
Well, I was just, just going to reiterate for that. Had, had that been done before that first finger we had, and so I wouldn't have been here, that wouldn't have happened. I think this is for no reason.
Motion in a second? Any other discussion? Not, those are favor, signify, saying aye. Aye, opposed, no, all members voting for motion. Okay. Discussion of management of athletic recreational programs at city parks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city park, Etowah River Park, is moving right along. And just to clarify a point, last Thursday, the day after the major flood where Heritage Park was three feet underwater, I was down at the Etowah River Park, and 25% of the park in the wetlands area had water on it. And it made reference to the fact about the empathy it was underwater or it would be built. It was not. I was very pleased to see that that whole end, and I think you made a trip down there yourself and saw that, that whole area was above the flood stage. And if it's three feet in Heritage, it's, that's got to be big, and we didn't have that. So, and they referred to it as a 100-year rain. Once again, we've had it the last two or three years, but that was great news. So, that didn't impact the amphitheater. But as we look ahead on this project, what we need to do is to make sure that for the youth athletic association groups around the city, we need to get a handle on our park parks. We have quite a few now, and we'll have three more. I went to the city, Canton City Code Park and Recreation Section, Section 38-32, as Youth Sports Association. And there's a nice outline of things that they should do, and rules and regulations, but it really does get down to the management of how we're going to manage these ballpark. So, what I've asked Mr. Dyer is to look at a couple of concepts that we can put together a framework that is more detailed than this, these statements, and come up with something that's being worked on, and we'd like to bring to the work session two weeks when it comes out. And have it through, three weeks, whenever, so that we can have, and it will be, one get to you prior to it, so you have an opportunity to look at, so we have the work session, we can dialogue on it, because we want to make sure we don't alienate ourselves with any particular youth groups or anybody else who wants to be able to utilize our fields. We're going to have some excellent fields, and that's what the plan is. As soon as I get something, it'll be to you. You can look at it, we can dialogue on it, and then look ahead. So, we, that aspect, the management of that whole concept needs to take place after we agree upon what we can do on our parks and how we're going to manage them. Because there's a number of parties out there that feel they own some of our ball diamonds or some of our soccer fields, and they don't. That's the city property, and we've got to specify that. So, we need to put that in. Thank you.
I just want to make one comment. Mr. Beresford wasn't at the last meeting, and Mr. Huffman made a very impassioned plea for the YMCA to manage some of the golf fields. And what the, the discussion was that at some point down the road, the Y was going to make a presentation to the council for their program to manage the field, so hopefully that would be at the, in three weeks at the meeting where you're going to have your proposal.
Thank you. That's kind of putting a horse before the cart, cart before the horse, or a horse out of the barn, or whatever it is. We've got to come up with our rules, regulations for how this thing will be managed. Once we have that done, then we can start looking at some other alternatives. So, I think that will come, but before we do that, we need to get this in place, policies.
I was just making, reminding you what he said because I know you weren't here to hear it.
Yeah, I see it, I looked at it, and I said, there's, there's two parts to it, which, and one of which is, I'm totaling concurrence with, is somebody has to manage the scheduling of those fields for the different organizations. But in the same time that we develop that plan, whatever that plan is, we have to make critically sure that any organization has an equal opportunity, that it's, there's, there's no bias towards the scheduling organization to say, well, we're scheduling. The second issue is whoever does schedule it has got to have a very good method of communicating when it is scheduled so that citizens who want to pick up a Saturday play football game or something on one of the fields that just get together don't show up without having been informed that there happens to be five soccer games going on that particular day. So, the impartiality of usage has got to be there, and the communication of the usage has got to be there, and the scheduling should be centralized or coordinated. But I agree with Beresford, let's lay out the plan first, then try and figure out who best can serve that plan. Any other discussion? Thank you. Under new business, city manager, party, anything additional?
Mayor, I've got just a few things I should update you and council on. Please, one, we did have a pre-bid meeting for construction management on the wastewater treatment project Tuesday. We had seven firms attend that pre-bid meeting, so we're hopeful we'll get some good proposals out of that seven and keep that process moving along. Yesterday, Mayor Hopgood, Mr. Patton, Mr. Webb, and I met along with one of our park staff representatives with Liz Cole, who originally designed Heritage Park. We offered a number of suggestions to her of various components that might need to be considered, both for recreational purposes and for better maintenance purposes. We still have some significant drainage problems down there, and she will, within the very near future, be presenting those suggestions back to us. We also have had David Shirley, a local surveyor, redraw the route to establish the trail from Etowah to Heritage Park, to establish that trail as close to the riverbank as is possible. We really want to take advantage of the river, and we want hikers and users of that trail to be able to feel the river and see the river. And so Liz has some, or someone on her staff actually, has some successful experience in dealing with the state EPD, and so we've asked her to take that on, and I think she'll be getting back to us within, hopefully, the next few days that was specifically that were involved. She felt like, at least there have been some successful projects that her firm has been involved with, with EPD, in a right time to action. We were concerned about something dragging on and on for a year or 18 months or something, but she indicated that their firm had recently taken on a similar project successfully on behalf of Gwinnett County, and had been able to turn that one down in about 30 days. She didn't say she could turn, turn it around for us that quickly, but at least we're hopeful that we won't be dealing with that on, on an extended basis. Our group insurance plan, we've been, we can re-big that every three years. Next year will be the third year of that, so that plan year, I believe, begins in April. Eagle can direct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's when it, when it's up. But because that process can be quite technical and quite time-consuming, we'll be advertising for RFPs within the next few weeks so that staff and council will have adequate time for a review and for recommendations, authorization of a contract award by city council, and then the timely administrative implementation of that program, whatever it ends up being, throughout our employee roster. So, we'll be getting those RFPs published soon, and I'll bid us all guys.
Okay. Thank you. The only item I have is, I wanted to announce, Mr. Wood and I, and others attended a meeting, Stan Rogers, and a member who else from the DDA, Rebecca Johnson, and Wonder Roach, I guess, but, with Mr. Jerry Cooper and an architectural firm, and they are prepared now, have, are ready to begin work as of September the 2nd on the move in that skin on that Jones building. And so they're going to take it back down, begin, I think it's only going to take about 30 days or so to do that, and, and take it back to its original brick appearance, and I think that's really going to be a real plus for this, this city, and I think there's a lot of folks that have been wanting to see that happen for a long time now. And the, they also have some, they're in serious negotiations with someone who would take the building over to, I understand, but part of, part of that process is that they are getting rid of the outside, taking it back, and also they'll be taking the guts out of the inside of the building, I think, so that the, the new people, should that be finalized, would, would do remodeling and repurpose that building. That's a, a real plus for downtown Canton, I think, is that, that once that gets back to that brick building, it's really going, I think, really going to, and it's going to be in the city to others to come. The one, the only one negative there is the fact that during that period of time, there's going to be some additional parking problems. They're going to need the parking spaces there at the, north at the end, I guess, of the Jones building, where the park for the post office, those two rows there, as well as down Main Street, down to the limits of the building, and on North Street, the limits of the building. So, they're going to be, once they get started, started working there, it's going to... So, they're going to be, once they get started, started working there, it's going, it's going to tie that up for a little while anyway. But I tell you, it's going to be worth it. It's going to be worth it. Of course, we've got the water authority doing the renovation of the, of the Allegiance Bank building or the old Etowah Bank building there. And hopefully that's going to be another bright spot, look good, hopefully, in the next few months. So, a lot of things going on downtown, a lot of things. Last First Friday was amazing. It was really, really good. And if you missed it, you missed, missed something there at that point. So, things are looking at us. So, just wanted to make sure everyone was aware that beginning, the work is scheduled to begin on the Jonesville September the 3rd and should be completed no later than October the 2nd. Soon as it doesn't light, I guess. It's a pretty big assumption, I guess. But anyway, that's all that I have. We do have a, need a meeting for an executive session. It will be brief. We won't be coming back out to do anything at that point, but I'm going to make a motion to adjourn the executive session. Have a motion. Have a second.
Sir.
All those folks out.